Special Board of Sewer Commission. We're here to approve. The budget. Alright, let's approve agenda, approve wastewater treatment budget for two thousand and twenty-one. And then number three is public comments. Motion to approve.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Um, Bob?
Uh, I.
Mike?
I.
Jamie?
I.
Ronnie?
Three.
Me, I. Okay, has everybody had a chance to look at the budget?
Um, yes.
Yeah.
Is there anything that anybody wants to go over to discuss, questions? I would assume if you have questions that you uh. Emailed or texted our team.
She did a good job balancing it out.
Uh, I don't see anything. I mean, I just see a few things, five hundred dollars down, couple of things up five hundred dollars, but nothing major. It all looks good to me.
There's no increase in last year's, or like, she's made pretty good adjustments there.
Yep. Ronnie, do you have any questions?
No, I think it was pretty good. Everything is going on.
Okay, Mike?
No, I, I just wanna make sure that everyone knows um. How her scores were, we've been going over that publicly, other scores when she scored a hundred percent.
I think we said something a couple of weeks.
We didn't mention it, but it's worth, it's worth.
It is, she, she had outstanding scores um. Uh, upon nurse's last inspections, you know, and I just, I just want everyone to look to watch and to know that, um.
She does an outstanding job.
Right, right, yep, you know, her scores are, are a hundred percent, all the way across the board, so. Um, with no name for which meeting, so I just, I just wanted to mention that, make sure we have the state inspected and that was unprecedented.
Right, yes.
Right. There are a lot of things to look at.
Yes, so I would like to say thank you, Darcy, for a dad well done, we all appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay, since there's no other.
I make a motion to approve the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so Mike?
Yes.
Bob?
I.
Jamie?
I.
Ronnie?
I.
Angie, I. So the I's have it. And I entertain, oh, we have to have public comment, I'm sorry. So we are open for public comment, just remember that each person can talk for three minutes. Anybody in the weight room? No, okay, good. We'll give them a couple of minutes and then we'll.
Well, there will be another opportunity for public comment.
Right, for the.
We'll give them those six fifty.
Yeah, six fifty, just sound on wastewater.
Yep.
We can't start the other one, right?
Your budget here for signature.
Uh, yes, I do believe it is.
We're gonna say it before we leave.
Exactly.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So no public comment? Do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second?
Thank you.
Um, Bob?
I.
Jamie?
I.
Mike?
I.
Ronnie?
I.
Angie, I. Thank you very much, we'll be starting our regular select board meeting in about ten minutes, thank you. Cam, for our special meeting. Agenda approval of number one, two is approval of minutes, three is warrants. Four is old business, Kurt Muller, approval excess weight permits. Two thousand twenty select board appointments of on-field vacancies. Forensic auto audit follow-up. CPA contract, TA position. Bean Road tax sale property, five, new business, the panel youth baseball. Six, public comment will be available via Zoom. Please state your name for the record and there are um, three minutes per speaker. And please be respectful, thank you. So approval of agenda?
Yes, so um, the executive session.
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes, we have executive session at the end for share contract renewal.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a. Two on a second, so Mike?
I.
Bob?
I.
Jamie?
I.
Ronnie?
I.
Angie, I. Um, two, approval of minutes of six to twenty.
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Mike?
I.
Bob?
I.
Jamie?
I.
Ronnie?
I.
Angie, I. Alright, warrants, number three. Bear with me, I didn't bring my bifocals, sorry. Payroll ending five thirty-one twenty for eight thousand. Six hundred and ninety-six dollars and nineteen cents. Payroll ending six seven twenty for eight thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. Payroll ending six four twenty for nine thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and five cents. Alright, accounts payable. Fifty for thirteen thousand twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. And one of the big things on that was chloride for four thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. And number fifty-one. Accounts payable for thirty-six thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and four cents. And some of the big things on that is the sheriff's department for five thousand eighty dollars. Um. P S West. Engineer fees for six thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents. Calcium chloride, four thousand three sixty-two eighteen. Accounts payable. Fifty-two for thirty-one thousand seven thirty-one twenty-two. And. Trash casella waste management was six thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-four cents. And then, um. The town of panel annual administration fee for eleven thousand two hundred dollars. Ten thousand of that is from the road department for administration and a twelve hundred for um. Treatment plant and the treasurer is also in that ten thousand. And that's it, so can I have a motion, please? A second?
One second.
Any discussion? Mike?
I.
Bob?
I.
Jamie?
I.
Ron?
I.
Angie, I. Alright, old business. Kurt Muller, B H B transfer station assessment update. Is he in?
Not sure if he's in the group yet.
He's supposed to be in the Zoom group. Kurt, are you there? Okay. There with us.
Ah, okay, there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good, it was, there was a message that came up that said the host needed to unmute me, so I was trying frantically to uh, to do that, but. Um. Good evening all, uh, so I was, I was asked to uh, provide an update on the, the pound of landfill uh, investigation, the next steps. Um, but before I get started, I wanna let everybody know that Sean Donovan is also on the line. Um, Sean's the DEC site manager who we've been working with on this project as well. And I'm not sure if Lynette is on the line as well, Lynette, are you there? Lynette manages the, the funding for this and, and she.
She just came into the waiting room and they're letting her in.
Okay, great.
You said Lynette?
Lynette.
Yes, Lynette, L Y N N E T T E. Quirone C L A U D O N.
Thank you.
So Lynette, are you there? She may need to be unmuted as well. Okay. Well, I guess we can, um, does the host need to unmute Lynette? There we go. Hi Lynette, we were just introducing you. Um. So, I guess, I, I wanted to just, um, Linda asked me to provide an overview of the status of things um, with the investigation and then the next steps and uh. Also discuss the loan and, and, and Lynette can support that conversation regarding the loan. Um, and then if there are any regulatory questions, Sean can certainly support that, so. Um, I'm gonna go through quite a few things, but I'll try to make it quick, uh, stop me along the way if you'd like, but um, so. Uh, last, last year, we initiated a um. Uh, a phase one environmental site assessment, identified some recognized environmental conditions um, related mostly to the west landfill, but. But uh, several other things throughout the site, and so as a result, we had done, we developed a um, preliminary investigation. Scope of work that was approved by DEC and the focus was to essentially evaluate soil, groundwater and surface water. And to see if, if what contaminants existed, how much of a problem it was, and, and have they started migrating. So fortunately, uh, and surprisingly to that effect, a lot of the soil data, or most of the soil data came back clean. There was some arsenic in one location that was elevated, but um, for a, a large landfill such as this, I was surprised that. Both, both the soil and primarily the groundwater um, uh, data came back as clean as it did, however. There was a, a contaminant that was identified that are, that's not referred to as PFOS, it's uh, per and poly. Floral alcohol substances, and you may have heard of this, these on the news recently, but you can find them in f- um. Food packaging, polishes, waxes, Teflon, it's wire manufacturing, firefighting foams, but. It's a, it's a very um, persistent chemical and it was found in groundwater at concentrations that were relatively high. We, um, so as a result, we, we were able to identify that this is basically a, a, a PFOS site. With groundwater and the, the PFOS concentrations have, have, looks like have started to migrate into. The forested wetland to the northwest of, of the western landfill. And so as a result, we, we knew all along that there would likely be a supplemental investigation needed. And when we set the, the initial loan together and the initial bigger picture scope. I took a stab in the dark as to what that supplemental scope would be without any data from the initial investigation. So as such, we designed an investigation to determine the extent of impact both horizontally. And vertically in uh, groundwater. So what that means is, we're gonna be putting some additional monitoring wells in around the areas that, that we found the highest contamination. We'll also be putting some additional, we call it pyzometers, they're like little mini mo- monitoring wells, into the forested wetland further out. To, to, to see if the concentrations are tailing off, and then finally, well, we're also gonna be doing some surface water sampling. Over in the pond across the street, and then finally, there's also going to be um, uh. Private residential water sampling as well, most of those private wells are bedrock wells. So that's sort of a, a, a cheap and e- effective way to evaluate, has this contaminant migrated vertically or downward? Into bedrock, um, and, and most importantly, is this an issue with, with, with drinking water and public health, so. Um, that's the approach that we're taking for the supplemental investigation. Uh, I've worked hand in hand with Sean on this and, and we've determined that that's an appropriate approach and, and um. And so the proposal we put together um, outlined that. We're, we're teed up at this point to, to do that supplemental investigation in early July. Um, starting with the, starting with the well installation and the sampling. And then the sampling of the residential wells as we can coordinate with those individual residents. Basically focusing on about a quarter mile area around the, the landfill with the west landfill being the center of that. Um, give or take. So that's it in a nutshell, um, any questions on that technical side of things before I get into the financial piece?
Um, and supposedly, uh, I guess worst possible case is that you, you do find, uh, uh. Was it PFOS in the, in the drinking water? Um, what is the regulation for that? It's like TFOA where you either have a filtration system or you're forced to find.
Alright, that, that is correct, yes.
Either one of those.
Correct.
System or another source. Um. So, so there's no real way to clean it up?
With, without some sort of treatment or filtration, no, and, and um, you know, once it's gotten into the groundwater, particularly the deep groundwater. There's, the most cost-effective way is, is, is filtering in place in a situation like this, there's no. Digging up the problem and making it go away, um, that would be far more expensive than it would be to, to treat the individual. Um, se- what they call sensitive receptors.
And then, uh, so it, it then what happens after, uh? Do you come back after ten years and do, uh, or, or should the town come back after ten years? I mean, does it dissipate over time or is it just, it remain as it is?
It's, it's quite persistent, so it, it, over time, anything will dissipate, dissipate either through dilution or through degradation. But the reason, you know, the reason things don't stick to your pan and the reason that your cheeseburger doesn't stick to the wrappers. Um, or water beads is because this is such a persistent chemical that, that basically creates a coating. That doesn't dissolve easily in, in water. Um. So I guess, you know, where, where we are with this big picture, given the fact that the soil issue really isn't that big a deal. And fingers crossed that it hasn't impacted the, the, the bedrock drinking water. Um, ideally, what would, what would be required would be monitoring to make sure it's not migrating any more than it already has. And then capping the landfill and closing it, that would be the ideal scenario. So this is a really pivotal point in terms of the investigation to understand, has this impacted bedrock? And if it has, that's when we'd have to start looking at those individual um, treatment options for those homes.
What do we do? If, if it's migrated into the, the wo- forested wetland, we're gonna cap the landfill, we possibly gonna have to remediate that. Surface water.
Well, it's, i- if, if there aren't any direct sensitive receptors, um, it would, it would, and, and. We're putting the cart a little bit forward the horse, but we would, there are a lot of sites that have contaminated water that we just continue to monitor to make sure it's not. Advancing or migrating, continuing to migrate into um. Into something that would be a sensitive receptor, so with a landfill that's capped. Um, you're, 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 you're essentially gonna be cutting off that. Flow of water into the landfill to then force that gradient out, so you'd be slowing the migration per se. Um, and there are also ways to do kind of a, a reactive barrier perhaps that would block it, but that's, that's much more hard engineering. And that's what we'd like to avoid, um, if we don't have direct sensitive receptors that are impacted.
Thank you.
So I, I just wanted to get into, into one more piece of this, um, and, and I know that there's some sl- newer select board members. And, and wanted to revisit kind of the process and mechanism for funding this. Um, this was a very creative use of, of the clean water state revolving fund, which is a loan mechanism. That the state offers, typically those have been used for more infrastructure projects such as um. Stormwater or wastewater treatment plant type projects, hard engineering projects, but this is one of the first times it's been used for an investigation. To then trigger a potential cleanup, so um, with that being said, the, there's. It's not guaranteed all the time, but there's been enough money in that fund that there's a subsidy that's associated with it, so. Um, it, for ev- up to, up to a hundred thousand dol- well, up to two hundred thousand dollars annually. Um, you, you get a fifty percent subsidy on that two hundred thousand dollars, so if it's two hundred thousand dollars worth of work. You end up gonna be resp- and your principal, you'll be responsible for, is a hundred thousand for that annual fiscal year. Um, so it's a, it's a, it's a, i- in, in the terms of the loan are zero percent. Over a five-year period after the loan is closed, so um, I just barely touched on that, but. But that's as I understand it from my discussions with Lynette and, and other folks there. Um, the reason that, uh, so as I identified, we put this. Um, environmental services agreement together and it had both the primary initial investigation. It had the stab in the dark idea of what a supplemental investigation would be, and I had to cost that out without any data. And then there are some supplemental steps after that, having to do with um, permitting as well as a, an evaluation of corrective action alternatives. Ie, what are the, what's the problem, what can we do to fix it, and then presenting to you various options to fix it, so. So that was all built into that one, what's called environmental services agreement. Because I had to take a stab in the dark on what that cost would be for that supplemental investigation, I had guesstimated in the approximately the seventy-five thousand dollar range. Um, because we need to get a bigger drill rig out there, because the PFOS sampling, the actual analytical is expensive. And because of the requirements for quality assurance, we have to take duplicates at each of the houses. To make sure, because it, it's very, very sensitive analysis, to make sure that um. Uh, the quality of the samples are good, so the point being is, in order to daughter eyes across the Ts. Um, the, the, the investigation was, ended up being more expensive, or the budget for the investigation, the estimate was more expensive. Closer to the eighty-eight K range, so there's a thirteen thousand dollar difference. And so what the proposed um, plan is, is to amend the contract to, or amend the loan. To include that thirteen thousand dollars in the next fiscal year. So you are then eligible for the subsidy on that because the front subsidy, the first loan. Would, was, has already gone past that, 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 that primary subsidy number. Um, so that's, that's the game plan that we have to maximize the subsidy for you within that, this next fiscal year. And, and um, I did my best Lynette, based on what you've explained to me, but is there anything that you'd like to add to that, or are there questions that are? That people have, I th- I just wanna make this clear on, um, for everybody.
Yeah, I could go over the loan terms again if you want, um.
Okay, thank you.
The, for a planning loan, uh, repayment starts five years after the loan ends. And it is over a five-year term with zero percent interest. Uh, so if you were not to refinance into a subsequent loan, uh, that would be the term. Um, as you keep amending your loans with us, uh, that gets bumped out, so if you go into designing next. Uh, we would project that there would also be additional subsidy available for design services, at least through the next I U P and probably the I U P after that. Um, it does, the subsidy does change every year, we just had our I U P hearing today. Uh, for the next fiscal year's I U P, and that fiscal year starts on, is it July sixteenth? So it'd be in your best interest to wait until July sixteenth to submit your loan application amendment. Do you have more questions?
Any questions, anybody?
Are, are these recurring costs? Is that what we're talking about? Um, uh, so it, because we're saying that we're gonna put the eighty-eight thousand into the, into the next fiscal year.
Adding thirteen thou.
Adding thirteen thousand, uh, to the seventy-five thousand initial, so that seventy-five thousand has not been spent?
No, we haven't initiated, we, we've spent a little of the front end of that to write the work plan that's been approved. Um, so we're about, we're about five or six K into that seventy-five, but that's all we've spent.
Okay, and, but that's one and done, right, that, that's the, uh, one and done for the eighty-eight thousand for the initial, uh, uh, estimate.
Correct, so ideally, we, we've determined the nature extent and we're in a position then from this next round of data to write. To start evaluating corrective action alternatives, so what that is will be, you have option one, option two, option three, here's the cost, here's the benefit. Here, and that, and there's a lot of collaboration and coordination on that piece. Um, and that's what should result from this, and then we head in the direction of, of addressing the problem. Once we've determined which solution it works best for the, the task.
Which will of course be the cheap one.
As long as Sean signs off on it.
Alright.
Taking care of the problem is the most important.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? Any questions?
No, I'm pretty clear.
Okay, so I, I'm gonna proceed with the investigation in early July and I will submit in mid-July. The a- amended loan amendment for the amount of about thirteen thousand, I don't have the exact number. Um, but that's, that's, that's how I'm leaving, that's the plan. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My pleasure, any other questions, I'm gonna sign off otherwise.
I know, I really appreciate the clear, the clearance.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, goodbye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright. We need to approve excess weight permit to Phoenix Feed and Nutrition and Company. A second?
One second.
Any discussion? Mike?
I.
Bob?
I.
Jamie?
I.
Ronnie?
I.
Angie, I. Alright, two thousand and twenty select board appointments for on-field vacancies. These are on-field vacancies and. Um, you need to send a letter of interest again to the panel select board. The four sixty-seven Center Street, panel Vermont oh five two six one, by June twenty. Alright, so we have fence viewer for two of them for three years. Hound's keeper, small animals for one, for one year, large animals, one for one year. Town service officer, one for one year. B C R C delegate, one, to fill remaining one year of a three-year term. E R B, one primary, to fill remaining two years of a three-year term. Conservation commissioners, commis- excuse me, commission. Five for a four-year term, Lister, one for the remainder of twenty twenty. Trustee of Public Monies, two for the remainder of twenty twenty, Economic Development Committee for one. And that's it, so please have your letter in by June twenty-fifth. Thank you very much. Any discussion on that from anybody? Um, forensic audit follow-up? That would be you.
Uh, yeah, so I reached out to, uh, I reached out for a forensic auditor and I did get a response back, he, he is dealing with some, uh, some, um, um. Well, some hardship, some family hardship and some hardship, uh, uh, in the office, so he, he's lost a lot of staff. He's asking if he could have it put to light and give us the forensic audit report. Uh, we're pretty close to that now, so I, um. Uh, but he anticipates it, he can get that done by July.
He's gonna report to us or is he gonna sign it to us?
Uh, he's gonna send it to us, so he, he, in order for him to come in, I think we knew that, that we would have to pay him more, he's just gonna send us the final report.
Everybody else, very.
Okay, yeah, so there won't be, uh, there won't, he will not be coming back into the office to do a, to do a verbal report, but he will be sending us the final written report.
Okay.
So we should look for that around, around July, I don't think he was fully committed to that date, but it was right now, right?
Yeah, he, so he gave a range of like, July six to ten, and I just took the end of it and said by July, we get it earlier.
Right, I just wanted to make sure it's clear.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on that? CPA contract?
Uh, that's a question I put on there, um, I just wanna know where we stand with that, what the timeframe is, because I don't know. So, this is a question that I have, oh, well, do, I, we, we have. A CPA hired to do, to replace our auditors.
It's not, it's not a CPA hire, we have a three-year contract with the Bonne Deale Group. Who, who will do our, our annual audits for three years. The, the statute said you either have internal auditors or you have a, an annual, uh, an annual audit. And, 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 so we've fulfilled the statute, but we have.
Oh, okay.
And they've already been with us for one year, correct? So they're.
I believe that's correct, but let's ask, uh.
Yeah, we just, when does that contract end?
I believe two years.
Two more years.
Two more years, Linda?
Twenty-two.
Okay. Okay, so we got our covered statute-wise, yeah, okay. For the last dis-. Right, for this fa- ass dis-. Right, for this past decision, right, okay.
So we will have that in the next couple of meetings.
Okay, just want that to be clear.
Anything else on that? All right, moving on to T A position.
I also put that on um. And you guys feel free, cause we've all seen emails back and forth. So time is if I forget something, I don't really wanna pull the emails up um again. So I reached out to uh V L C T after some questions were raised on the town administrator position. Um. There there's a little confusion back and forth with V L C T, as you guys saw.
Yeah.
And they recommended that we um contact our attorney. And per V L C T, what they what they said, as well as what our attorney said. Um we are not bound to hire a town administrator. If it was a town manager form of government, correct me if I'm wrong, guys. If it was a town manager form of government, then we would have been bound. And and the V L C T and Bob Fisher both received. The ballot article from March twenty seventeen, word for word, as it was voted on. I I copied that word for word and sent it to both. Um so we are not bound to hire a town.
No, we're not. It was only an advisor.
That's right. It was and it was pretty uh uh pretty well worded from our from our town attorney.
Absolutely.
And it was uh and it was pretty clear as to what what the mandate was. There was never a mandate. If we were gonna go to a different form of government, that would have to look before the vote.
Right, right.
And but but that's not what we're doing.
Right, no. Just wanted I just wanted to make sure I was clear on on explanation. And obviously, um all of those emails would be available to anyone who would.
Right, exactly. Any other discussion on that? Any questions? Okay, moving on. Dean low tax sale property. You put that on there as well?
I can talk about it. We 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 all we all got the same.
Yeah.
Emails once again.
Yeah.
Maybe I did. Sorry. Um so there's been some questions raised on. Our procedure, what the proper procedure is when the town or municipality acquires a piece of property. Or or um and once again, reached out to V L C T and our attorney.
Yeah.
Um. So there were some questions raised on on the legal process and um obviously, I don't think any of us knew. How to do or what we're doing, really, under exam. We had an idea. Um so in a nutshell, uh there were Mister Fisher sent us. Three options, basically. Um one was uh help me out here. The first one was.
Start a victim.
Start a victim, a tenant, um going through that and we remain the owners. Two was to put the property out to bid.
As it.
As is, that's right. Um with which which this this baffled me a little bit and I wasn't comfortable with this part of it. We put it out to bid and and we um and it's just my opinion. Um we put the property out to bid, the highest bidder gets the property. Well, well, actually, that's not true. We don't have to accept the highest bid. Sorry, we retract. We don't have to accept the highest bid. Okay, we can we can do whatever. The thing I didn't like about that is is according to the lawyers. Um we can't make any money. So so whoever the last taxpayer is. Let's say the town made fifty thousand dollars, we would forward that fifty thousand dollars to the last taxpayer. Right, or their estate. I have a problem.
That's what they didn't have.
Exactly. I I don't think the town should be in the real estate business to make money for somebody who didn't pay their taxes.
Exactly.
Okay, so the third option was to just move forward sort of with a lottery type system or whatever we did.
Um to be clear on the second option, it is the town's costs are all covered in that second option. And if anything over the town's cost goes back to the. Also, and that's why it. And and I mean, we recovered that.
That's right. We recall and and all of our expenses.
All right.
And and the third option is kind of what we did as as a board was to the interested party at the time. Was to move forward with a sale and recovering, again, recovering all of our expenses. On on that particular piece of property. Um and and it's all.
I found the email.
It's yeah, it's all a hundred percent, it's all a hundred percent totally legal what we did and the way we did it. And like I said, I'm not, I I I don't think the town should be in business for trying to make money for somebody who didn't pay their taxes.
Absolutely.
I I just, I have a problem with that morally and personally, so just me.
I agree.
The other part to uh the additional. Of what the action that the board's already taken, the only additional step is that. Once everything's finalized, we have to state the name of the individual who it's going to, who's doing the purchasing. And all the fees and it has to be publicly noted like in the paper.
Right, I think and it has to be for thirty thirty days. I think it was thirty days.
Yeah, like dumb.
Right. Now, the only thing that we would have to continue on right now is the thirty day.
The full transparency of the individual who right on with the purchaser with the um. All fees included, closing um um.
After thirty days from the date of the notice.
Right, so we would have to more, as far as I know, that has not been done. We would have to make that notice if we moved forward with the book. We would have to put that notice out. And and the expenses and then we could move forward.
Right, and I would like to make like down the road, for some reason, if this ever happens again, we announce that we have the property. We put out a date and whoever's interested in it can send in a letter, just like anything else.
Not gonna disagree with that.
Okay, it's moving forward, that is what I.
No, I I agree with that, but I know as right now, I feel the board made a decision that was formed in the agenda. And we had a letter of interest.
Exactly.
I feel we put confidence that we acted.
Accordingly, yes.
In linkable we did. According to our letter and V L C T, so we haven't done anything wrong.
Right, no, nothing at all.
And but.
For in the future.
Take a fairness, yes.
Fairness, absolutely.
And I think we should probably set a policy.
Absolutely.
The town policy.
Yeah, that's what that's what I would say. I mean, if we have free options, we seem to be trying to back and forth between those options.
Right, we should say this is what we would do or whatever. Right, this should be, this should be this policy. This should be the policy of the of the town policy board if this happens.
Absolutely.
And we could probably, I don't think it'd be that difficult to break that policy.
All right, so are we good on that or do we need a motion to?
I'd like to make a motion. Yeah.
And also, that gives anybody who is. One chance to petition.
Right.
To get it go to make it go through a bit.
Yeah, and that is after we warn it, like petition it for.
That's the email I.
It was thirty days after that as well.
Correct.
Like a hundred pages.
Petition is amended, we have to go through a big process. And I know, I don't know what, maybe many Canadian party. They had, they had a place on there with the Christmas tree. We got a bid, that went through Texas. They had a bid. And I see what they're taking in, the high bid was twelve thousand, county banker would not accept.
Right.
And I also heard too. But that's a room right here. Like we can make money on. Or porters with one lawyer, so.
Well, V L C T, I got the same message from.
Right.
Before we reached out to um our own attorney.
Right.
And then he said the same thing.
Yeah, we can't make money on that.
Even though.
We need money, we have to turn it over to the last previous act.
Well, that's only fair because that was their problem. And then and then in that case, that person get down.
I I think in this one, just a certain plan, this one, and I'm not gonna disagree with that, Ronnie. You're right, this person happened to, but but I mean, if we if we obtained a piece of property. From someone who was just delinquent and paying their taxes and then one year down the road. We uh uh you know, after the year, we ended up with a piece of property. And and we sold that property, like I said, fifty thousand more. We're obligated to give that fifty thousand to that going to the tax man, the going to person. And and that's why I have a problem with it.
The taxes were all paid.
But the taxes would be paid with all our fees, but then we but then we.
First, so we're actually not giving that person benefit. The penalties and taxes would be taken out first.
Right, the town's getting.
And whatever money is left over goes back to the property.
Ooh, right.
That's what I mean, if a person dies.
If a person dies, no, if a person dies, you can't hold that against them. Well, maybe in the in the case in the case of a death, I I consider, in the case of someone just being delinquent. Then that's what happened. But I mean, you can't.
And and delinquent can come for you. Somebody loses their job.
No, there's.
Family home. If it's been there for, you gotta, I mean, there's always.
There's, that's right, there's a lot of it anyway. No, that's right, it's hard to, you know.
Okay, so do we need a motion to move forward with this as we start?
Sure.
Okay, so can I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion if we move forward with this, with with the decision that we made on. Whatever the date was, wasn't it like the nineteenth of May, when or something, you remember? At any rate, at our at the at the May meeting that we made our initial decision on this. Make a motion, we move forward with this as decision.
All right, a second?
Second, very cool.
Okay, so Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Somebody who has agreed, they got a chance to petition.
Absolutely.
Right, the fairness part.
No, and I and I and that's, I guess I can amend the motion. Um follow the to follow the legal guidelines set out by uh V L C T and Bob Fisher.
All right.
For for moving forward with that process.
Okay, all right. With the amendment, Mike made the motion, Jamie seconded. So Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Ronnie? Angie, I. Right, thank you. New business to Pommel Youth Baseball. I got a um letter. After consideration of the new restrictions, Pommel Youth Baseball has voted not to have a season. So we have to take this out for the general. I'm sorry, and hopefully everybody stays healthy and happy.
Tough for the kids.
It's very, very tough for the kids. Okay, any other on that, nothing? So we can move on to public comments. For public comments, I would like to add. Before we start. I'd like to apologize for the last couple of meetings being canceled due to um a couple of things. Um I've read the open meeting law forward, backward, sideways, upside down. So I want everybody to know that this will be worn from now on in the Bennington banner. It's posted at the town office, it's posted at the village market, it's posted at Winchester store. It's posted on the webpage. Our regular meetings will be live from cat TV or if we're on Zoom, they're on Zoom right now. Taking. Special meetings will be taped. And also, if you don't have any way to internet or anything like that, you can call in on a landline. You need the meeting number and the password, which is put on the agenda. Okay, and please remember to be respectful. Talk to us like you would like to be talked to. Respect people, please, and thank you. Remember, three minutes per person per subject. Public comment is now open. Thank you very much.
Host, is there anybody in the waiting room for it?
Would you please raise your hand on Zoom if you would like to ask us a question?
There's also a tab down on the bottom that you can click.
For raising your hand.
Correct. Up here, just. There you go, we got one. That's me, Marsh, Marsh, okay, Marsh.
Mike, you're gonna be my three minute line.
You got it.
Okay. So raise your hand when we have a minute left, okay, or finger or something, so I can know. There.
Okay, you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, good. To my neighbors on the select board and neighbors all around town about the decisions on A T V use. Friends, our community, in my opinion, is wounded. Fear, like blood, is running down our streets and roads. Many people are frightened. Frightened to say what they feel, frightened of physical threats, to verbal attacks in person or on social media. From name calling and judgmental con comments to acts of vandalism. Neighbors are frightened also to lose the freedom and adventure of the sometimes scary and sometimes thrilling rides through the woods. And time and space with friends that is the life-saving joy in lives that are often hard. Frightened to lose the healing peace that makes our house a home, our land, a sanctuary. That comes from the songs of the birds, the rush of the streams. That is not drowned out with the blare of someone else's idea of music or the roar of loud engines. Frightened to lose our livelihood or offering a quiet retreat for others. Our fear has birthed anger, hurtful words, power struggles, breakdown of public respect and trust. And we have built deep, thick walls to isolate us from anybody who might endanger our hopes and dreams. We put every neighbor on one side or the other and we stop listening to the heart of our neighbors. Some think friends is dying in our town, our community, our soul, our love for one another. I fear that if you, our chosen leaders, keep pushing ahead to make a new ordinance before we learn to hear each other's hearts again. Before we really open to what all of our neighbors think and feel, no matter how good a plan you may have. We will carry enduring wounds from not being heard and honored. And the hurt and anger will deepen scars old and new in our hearts and in the relationships we have in our community.
Mr. Marsh, you have one minute left.
And we will miss the opportunity to listen to our neighbors with care once again. And discover ways to honor every person and work as one community to honor all people. Stop, I ask you. Pause now. Make a time for us to talk and listen and learn with each other and work together. For a good plan for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marsh.
All right, is anybody else out there? Please raise your hand. There's no one else, Angie. We've got one few minutes.
Well, I guess if uh if I could say a couple of words.
Sorry.
I I I do wanna point out that we you we did have some, we did have uh meetings last year, a lot of meetings. Um they weren't, they they weren't really through the board and uh to Mr. Matt's credit, uh he he drove a lot of them. And they were private citizens coming together and then they recommended. I hope everybody realizes that we did take all those in consideration. We 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 are, we are taking the feedback that we get. And if uh uh personally, if I didn't believe that the ordinance would help both sides and all sides, I I wouldn't be for it. I believe it'll bring more safety, more uh more respectful use. Um and and it will weed out some of the bad players as well as respect the rights of uh uh as well as respecting the rights of the citizen. So I I I think it's the uh. Again, I would not be, I would not be behind it if I didn't believe that. Now, if somebody convinces me that that's not what's gonna happen. Then I'll change, I'll change my mind. But that's uh I just wanna make sure that people understand. These aren't falling.
Rick Thompson?
Put together.
Excuse me, we have a Mister Rick Thompson that would like to speak.
Thank you.
Yep, hi guys, um.
Hi.
Hey, Ron. Uh in I really just have a question. I've been following um the discussions and comments and front porch forum. And the various webpages and I'm just a little confused as to where where are we on the ordinance? Is there an ordinance written? Is it um enforced? Where, where are we on the ordinance, is there an ordinance written, is it um enforced, or wha- what's the status, cause I can't. Maybe I'm looking in the wrong places, I just can't like find out what some of the facts are with, behind some of the rhetoric. So that's my comment, it's really just a question or an update, or just direct me to where I can get the information.
Okay, Bob's gonna answer your question.
Okay, so um uh, right now, there is no ATV board. There was one that was, the board was, the previous board was considering last year.
Yeah.
Here we had, we've only had one working session, that was on June second, and we brought before the board a a. A proposal. To get input from the board and to decide what we're gonna go forward with. Unfortunately, since then, we've not been able to have another, uh eight other meetings, so right now, all there is is traffic ordinance. And in the traffic ordinance, there's four roads open, and uh I I think you've probably read those in social media.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that, thank you.
And four roads and four sections of roads, uh some of those are just sections. Um. However, we also do get an awful lot of complaints about ATVs, about noise, about the, and and they run the gamut, I mean. Complaints are everything from dirt bikes to four wheel drive vehicles, to ATVs and other things. And so there's a, there is a, a, it is a confusing issue, because it conflates a lot of different issues. The ATV ordinance that we're considering is specific to ATVs as defined by the state of Vermont, by Vermont statute. It does not handle dirt bikes, it doesn't say anything about the modified four wheel drive vehicles. And and unfortunately, I don't think any ordinance is going to eliminate the after hours partying, I don't think that's an ATV issue, I think that's more of a. A after hours partying in DMI is. It's a human issue, uh, and 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 because even when we see films of of people on ATVs coming out of the woods. It's an ATV, it's a dirt bike, and some of them are automobiles or or SUVs, so that's really is a different issue. Uh, what we're trying to do with the ordinance is to move something forward that's gonna uh make it easier to identify. Uh, ATVs uh through the registration process and through that sort of thing, so that you can easily say, you know, there's one with a sticker. That's that's licensed, registered, insured, licensed, registered, insured, uh huh. And and give, give uh, uh, make it a lot easier to identify those machines that that don't have all of the prerequisites. A lot of the questions we got were around how you can ensure insurance, how you can ensure that they're registered. Um, and and unless we have some kind of sticker process or some kind of registration process with the town, we're not checking those things, and we're not checking them today. Because we don't have them. So that's part of it, but then we also wanna be respectful to those people who just wanna pursue their hobby in a legal, regulated, and safe way. Uh, and that's really the goal, now, people can disagree about whether or not the the ordinance achieves that. Uh, but that is absolutely the goal.
We have to start somewhere.
And and we have to start somewhere, and the process we're. And uh, uh, very good, uh, and and uh, uh, and the process, I wanna make it very clear, the process that we're following. Is the process that was recommended by our town attorney.
Uh, by our, sorry?
An issue like this, sometimes you gotta put your head down and just, and just do it, and then, and then let the process play out.
Okay, thank you very much, I I'm, that's, that's very clear, I just wasn't sure where we were.
Well, thank you for the both.
Thank you very much.
Another point that I wanna touch on, um, people complained about. Uh, full sized vehicles. The areas of where these vehicles are traveling are are could actually considered class four roads.
Well, not all.
That, I, the majority of where I've seen some of the videos have been on our class four roads. And um therefore, a vehicle is allowed on that road.
And to be clear, the ordinance has nothing to do with.
Exactly.
ATVs as defined by the state of Vermont, they're specific on the wheelbase size, very, very specific about what an ATV is and isn't.
Right, the other falls under traffic.
Okay, thank you so much, sir, have a good night.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the waiting room, wait, raise your hand, please? Okay. If you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Okay. This is bad.
Case people don't know, it's.
Very hot in here.
And it's not the top, it's just temperature wise, it's very.
Comment, write yes in the chat box. Renee Williams, would you like to make a comment, if so, please write yes in the comment box? All right, does anyone wanna make a comment?
No more? Public comment?
Okay. Alright then, apparently there's some more public comment?
Hold, hold on, whoop, yeah, I found.
One more, okay.
See a gym, I'm, I assume it.
There's a lot of gym out there.
Yes, there is.
Hello? Jim, are you there?
This is Jim.
This is Jim. Jim, would you like to make a comment? Hello? Is there anybody else in the waiting room?
Did he change his mind?
Okay. I will give them one minute.
He left.
He left?
Looks like he left.
Okay. Okay. Alright, can I make, um, can I entertain a motion to go in executive session for sheriff contract?
So moved.
Second? Alright, Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Angie, I, we want to do executive session, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.